The Conway Planning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on public hearing items. The City Council will make a final decision on these items using the Planning Commission recommendations as a guide. Items reviewed at tonight's Planning Commission meeting may be considered by the City Council on June 12, 2018. Items not approved by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council within 30 days after Planning Commission denial. If an item is appealed to the City Council, a public notice sign will be placed on the property at least seven days prior to the City Council meeting, and a public notice will be placed at the city's website, www.cityofconway.org. All right, a couple of rules. We're gonna give each person that... The first person to speak for each item, 10 minutes; each subsequent person, two. Likewise, the first person to speak against each item, 10 minutes; each subsequent person against, two. Any questions? Oh. First thing on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from the April 16, 2018 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second?
There's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes. Any questions?
Nope.
Has been seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the report from the subdivision committee, which we just returned from. Mr. Chairman, what say you?
We met for active approvals for the Cherry Hill, face two preliminary subdivision. There were three items that required active approval. One that requested two additional curb cuts, or one additional curb cuts, for a total of two. For the three houses that face Favre Drive was approved five to one. Item 17 and 21 were approved unanimously. That dealt with emergency vehicle turnaround radiuses, as well as rear setbacks on the existing house on the structure. Both of those items passed unanimously, and then we concluded our subdivision committee meeting.
Thank you, sir. First item up for the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight that you guys are interested in is the request for zoning variance 1117 Donaghy Avenue. Pardon me, I guess I can't speak tonight. Board of zoning adjustment requests for reduced lot debt, reduced lot area, and reduced setbacks for property located at 1117 Donaghy Avenue. Is anybody here to speak for that? I will remind you that the decisions made by the Planning Commission acting as the board's zoning are final. No appeal may be made to the City Council. Any aggrieved party may pursue litigations should they feel the decision is unfair. Sir?
Yeah, my name is...
State your name and address for the record.
Derek Sherwood, 1117 Donaghy Avenue, Conway, Arkansas. Our proposal is to, I guess, subdivide this lot that we have on downtown Old Conway overlay. We have a house there that faces Donaghy Avenue and a back lot that we'd like to subdivide and sell to Jamie Moon, who's here in attendance, and have her build like a nice remodeled home, or not remodeled, but just a nice downtown home to put in that space and to kind of help with this revival of downtown that you guys have been seeing. Kind of, you know, we bought this house from Nikki and Rory Thompson, and they remodeled it, you know, an older home, and made it a gorgeous place, and we'd like to continue that development with this lot. We don't need the lot, the back space, for our purposes, and we'd just like to put that there. Our only, I guess, request that varies from the board's zoning is that we might have an easement on a portion of the parking pad that's in front of it there on the west side of the lot split. That way, we don't have to cut down trees that are bordering our lot on weems and pour a concrete pad there. So, we'd just like to use those resources that are already there without having... To take those up and just split where the lot splits. It goes right down the middle of that parking pad, and so we'd like to use just that one half of it to park, just have an easement there. And that's essentially our proposal. And I can have Jamie present more about what kind of homes she'd like to put there if y'all need any more specifics on that, but it'd be a single-family residence as it's zoned for, so.
Yeah, can we yield the rest of his time to her?
Hey, how are you all? My name is Jamie Moon. My business is Two Moon Design and Craft. I currently have two new constructions going on right now in Old Conway. They were replatted lots that I purchased from Lance Johnston, and we're currently building two three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family homes. We've gone through Design District Commission. They are cute little houses with hardy siding, wood accents, and I would like to do the same thing on this property as well.
Can you state your address, just for the record?
Yes, 24 Smoking Oaks Road.
So, you're building this to sell or rent?
Yes, to sell.
Okay. That's why I will return if we have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in favor of this request? Anybody opposed? All right, we'll call it into commission.
You're asking for three variances on one lot, and I have a problem with it. You have a gorgeous dog, by the way. Your dog's great. But that's just not enough room to subdivide that lot, in my opinion.
We'll share our view from the planning perspective if you like, or whatever.
Yeah.
We'd love for you to.
I'm gonna let Scott go for it, and I'll jump in there, whatever.
Scott Grummer, City of Conway, Planning, 1201 Oak Street, right across railroad tracks. If I say anything out of context or incorrectly, then I'll let Brian correct it for me, so. But anyway, so I'm the one who initially fielded this application at the City of Conway, and when we went through it, vetting it, one of the things that... We're getting more applications for use of land within the city, within the urban areas. So subdivisions are becoming a little bit more options, and we don't have ordinances for small lot subdivisions. So every... Each individual application, we have to look at at a specific way. This one, if you look on the actual map that they show, just to the south of this, you'll find that there's actually a subdivision very similar to what they're asking for. It's already been done along Donaghy Street. The other thing is, is that when you look to the east side of Donaghy, that's zoned R2, whereas this area is zoned R1, so it's kind of a transition from multifamily to single-family. So because this is on Donaghy, it kind of creates a sense of kind of a transition from a multifamily to... Even though they're requiring single-family since it's an R1. So for me, when I was fielding it, it seemed because you had patterns that were similar in the area of subdivision, they were looking for a single-family unit, not a multifamily unit, and we're having more requests for smaller lot-type developments for more affordable-type homes. And all over Arkansas, we're under kind of a siege of development right now for housing, so finding opportunities for housing is extremely large. So I saw it as a positive thing from my standpoint. But anyway, I'll let Brian answer any other question.
Somebody needs to grab that rock house catty-cornered from it and split that up into a couple of lots.
The only thing I'd point out to help explain what you're looking at as far as the drawing goes, they submitted the underlying drawing, and all the red marks are mine on top of that. But when they drew their drawing, they failed to take into account that we're going to require... Part of the plating requires street right-of-way dedication if the street is shown as a collector or above, whatever. If the right-of-way doesn't meet our current classifications. So that requires that 10-foot right-of-way dedication that you see in the hatch marks there along Donaghy. So that further sets the property line closer to the house, which is okay, but it wouldn't be the 16.4 feet, it's gonna be something more like 6.4 feet. And that's not an unusual situation, because as you go up and down Donaghy, all those houses are basically in the same line. So the cities... If we improve Donaghy and we acquire more right-of-way, it's either gonna be through the plating process, and the same thing's gonna happen again, or we'll be buying property when the time comes and we go to do something with Donaghy. So that's not an unusual situation there, really. The other setbacks, again, around the house, there are existing setbacks, so that's not a big heartache, I don't think. My recommendation on all this, another one to try to keep the concrete driveway, but it really doesn't yield itself to my way of thinking to be able to park cars on it efficiently, because you'll have to add more concrete to one side or the other, I think, to make it work so you can get more cars on there, and end up with a gigantic concrete pad out there instead of a driveway that goes with the houses, as you would in a more traditional-type pattern. So my recommendation, because of the street right-of-way, was to push the lot line to the midpoint between those two lots, with that in mind, which basically goes through the middle of that driveway or that concrete pad that's out there. And just do away with that concrete pad, come back with a new one that makes sense with this house and a new one that makes sense with that house. And the location of the one on the west side, I mean, you're pretty well set where it's gonna have to go with the one on the east side, but the west side, that can be determined as part of... This is gonna have to go... When the... If this happens, a new house design is gonna have to be approved by the Historic District Commission, so they could look at that in that case situation and see what might be the best place to put that driveway, or driveway and/or parking pad. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a parking pad, it could be a driveway that went to a rear garage structure or whatever. So, anyway, I just kind of wanted to point out the technical here to help you understand what all the scratching here is. So if there's any other questions about that, I'll be glad to answer.
Is the HDC gonna evaluate the lot coverage? What's a proposed square footage?
Yeah, and I don't think it'll be a problem. Their rule for this area is no more than 60% impermeable. So I think they'll have plenty of permeable space left over.
Okay.
So, Ann, what was your concerns?
It was just too small to me.
Yeah.
I mean, I grew up over there. You're taking away all the elbow room. But if people don't want elbow room, then they're not required to have it.
Yeah, I think like Scott pointed out, you know, you've got a precedent a block away on Duncan Street, which looks like it's nearly touching the property lines. So I honestly don't have a problem with it. I think it's a... You know, it's a nice way to kind of fill in that missing tooth.
Anybody else?
This whole little area needs some TLC, you know, so... Honestly, I... I drive through there every once in a while, but I... I'd drive through there every once in a while, but I didn't specifically go look at it, Anne, so I, you know, I, I know what you're saying about some of those are tied in there, but, but, I don't know, I think some sort of new money maybe would encourage some of those people around there to maybe fix theirs up a little.
It would blend well with the, with the house that's there now, because it has been refabbed and redone, and it's, it's really a pretty place. Maybe, you know, the more you put in there and the more you jive it up, the more people will want to come in and do the same thing. And I'm telling you, catty-cornered from there, somebody needs to take that big, oh, huge lot and do something with it.
Right. You know, I, I agree with, with Brian as far as taking down that concrete driveway and making it even more convoluted if you, if you lose a tree. Sorry, I, I love trees, but. So, you know, I, I don't really have much of a problem with it.
I don't either, and this may encourage what you're saying as far as that other lot. They may see this and go for that one. I, I think it's appropriate.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
With these conditions?
With the staff recommended conditions.
There's a motion on the floor to approve with these three staff recommended conditions. The platte will be divided as shown on the plan and staff sketch, removing the proposed jog property line around the existing concrete pad. The existing concrete pad shall be demolished, and a new, more appropriately-located parking pad shall be created to serve the existing residence. The Historic District shall determine the most accurate location. Sorry, the most appropriate location. A sidewalk shall be constructed along the Weems Street frontage of the west lot as part of the new construction in the Old Conway Design Overlay District, and Luffy may be paid in placement of the sidewalk. It's not appropriate due to the trees, existing sidewalk utilities, et cetera. This sidewalk construction or in Luffy must take place prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the new residence. Has been seconded by Delencia. Any more questions? I'll call it to a vote. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That's tight. Show of hands.
Six, two.
If you vote yes, it's six.
Six, two.
All right. Six, two, it passes. Next item on the agenda for the Board of Zoning, request for zoning variance, eight fifty-five Ellis Avenue. Do we have somebody to speak for that?
Hi, I'm Chris Thornton, ten twenty-five Reynolds, and, uh, this is just, uh, this lot was kind of, they kind of rounded the corner a little bit with the utilities and left us a few feet short of what we needed for our house there, and so we've been to all the utilities and asked them for, uh, if that would impair their ability to provide services in any way, and they all provided letters saying it was good to go. The utilities have actually already been moved, so there's really nothing left to do except, uh, the legal part of it, so.
All right, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in favor of this? Anybody opposed? All right, call this into commission. What say you guys?
I have a motion to approve.
Oh, second.
I have a motion to approve. Has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Brooks.
Brooks. All right. D three, request to rezone A one to R one, thirteen fifty Favre Lane.
Hello, Bobby French, uh, Central Arkansas Professional Surveyor, representing Rush Howe, uh, my office, ten twenty-one Front Street. This is, uh, property that's, be Cherry Hill subdivision. Phase two, but we'll end up plating it all together, but it's a little piece there that's, that's left that, uh, we're trying to rezone to residential. Any questions?
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Thanks, Bobby. Anybody else to speak in favor? Opposed? Okay. Call this one back into commission.
We are.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve by Brian. Has been seconded by Anne. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Passes. I like those, Kayanne. All right, D four, request to rezone from C three to P U D eight fifty Simon Street.
I'm Bill Atkinson. I'm an attorney here in town. My office is a seven-eleven locust, and I represent the Linds and their business interests, uh, who have filed this application for a P U D, uh, rezoning to allow an expansion of their existing metal recycling business on a one point six four acre tract that's just east, on east, on the east side of Simon Road and the westernmost, uh, part of their acreage. So, and nothing different would be going on there. It would just be an expansion. Be no buildings on it. It would just be some additional new equipment they plan to add. If this is approved, we would ask for your approval. And the Linds are here. If you have any questions of them or me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in favor of this? Anybody opposed?
I'm not speaking in favor or opposed, I guess, but mostly in favor. Uh, I'm Doris Hutchins, and I live at twenty-two Hummingbird Lane, just south of the Linds' property, and they've been there about as long as we have, uh, which is a long time. Uh, I think she says forty-seven years. I've been there about forty-six, so, uh, the main thing, we went up and met with them a few nights ago, and they showed us everything and what they were expecting to do, uh, several of the neighbors, and uh, I have a copy here of their proposed, um, planned unit development, and there were a couple of things on there I just wanted to reiterate. I don't know if this is, I'm not familiar enough. I don't know if this is an official, uh, thing that you would, you know, accept or approve or just what, but on it, it says the Linds don't expect the expanded recycling activities to add any additional noise or other potentially disruptive consequences than those they've conducted on this site in the past for many years. And I'm understanding that, I believe they're getting another, a newer machine, right, an electric machine, uh, to do this kind of equipment. And that is important, of course, to the neighbors, uh, that the noise level not be any greater than it is now. We, we don't want it anymore. And, uh, then the second thing would be, uh, their regular business hours would be approximately seven AM to six PM, and then, um, possibly, uh, on, from seven AM to one on Saturdays. And that's important, too, that, you know, they, they stick with those hours, uh, which I think for the most part, they have been doing. And the third thing, um, that Mr. Lynn mentioned just verbally in our conversation, he said that he would consider, uh, adding some additional, uh, a, a sound barrier there between the neighborhood and, uh, his property where this is taking, this recycling's taking place. And, uh, I would be in favor of that. I think, I don't know about the, all of the other neighbors, but I think that would be, if you could, if they might consider putting that in this document as an official, um, something they would do, uh, would be to add, uh, extra, additional sound barriers to kind of buffer from the neighbors.
Question?
Yes.
So you're okay with the hours on Monday through Friday and the Saturday hours?
Yes, I, I would be, just mainly just kind of reiterating that to say, okay, that sounds good, and if that would be followed, and maybe add the sound barriers, I think that would be a positive thing.
Okay.
Thanks.
Uh, my name is Robert Stone. I'm a, a self-employed contractor here in town for probably the last forty-five years, but I lived on Myl, I lived in that neighborhood for probably forty-two years. My wife lived there about sixty. And, uh, problem I've got with it, and I've got a little bit of a problem with what they've already got. If what they're going to e- expand is going to add any more noise to what they've already got, to me, it's unacceptable. I stepped off, I live fifteen hundred foot from his back piece of Mr. Lynn's property, and I can hear his operation in my garage with my garage door shut. And I can hear it in my house on occasions with the TV on. And some people says, well, you hear too good, but I've got my soundbar on my TV at seventeen, so I don't hear that good, so. And that's the problem we got is the noise.
You live on Mylum?
I live on Hummingbird, but, which is the south end of Mylum Drive.
Oh, okay.
And there's fifty-six houses between me and his point of operation that's closer than me. And there's more houses in that subdivision, but there's fifty-six houses that's closer than mine. So if I'm hearing this noise in my garage, and there's nothing worse than metal being squished and tore apart, it's, it's, I mean, I mean, it's worse than having somebody in front of your house blowing their horn. But, uh, I know what he's already got, is already there. And I'm all for soundproofing or something, but it's just, the noise pollution is bad.
So with the, uh, with the sound barrier that they're proposing, and with the new equipment, quieter equipment, do you think that that'd be something?
Well, the only problem I got with it was what he's got right now is loud. If you add any more sound to it at all, is it, just because that machine's going to be quiet, uh, to me, it's, you're adding more noise. To me. You know, if he could go back in what he's got right now and get that sound down.
So what he's had there has been there for forty-seven years?
No.
So we can't do?
No, his scrapyard hadn't been there about a year.
Oh, okay. Okay.
He's been business there for several.
Five years, so.
They changed from Lynn's Auto Salvage to James', uh, about five years ago or something.
No, that's not true. The scrapyard, the car crushing, hadn't been there no five years. I've heard this noise for a year, maybe? No, that, this is new, what they, their scrap metal yard. They got a car crusher in there, and they've got a crane, and it picked and dropped, they dropped metal in a big pile. No, but this hasn't been there for five years. They might have been selling some scrap for five years, but the operation they got now hadn't been there for five years.
I'm looking at my map online, so what, what road is it that you live on?
I live on Hummingbird.
Hummingbird, okay.
Yeah, if you fa, if you found Mylum Drive.
Yeah, I got it.
Go all the way to the south.
Okay.
I live in the house.
Okay.
And I've talked to, and most of the neighbors in the neighborhood, I know them all, and, and I've talked to quite a few of them. Most of them's in their sixties, and they just don't like to get out, but most of them are opposed to this noise. You know, I didn't go around with a petition or, or anything like that, but, you know, I thought some of them might would show up, but, but they did, and they just, it comes supper time, they hardly get out, but, uh, but, uh, that's all I've got to say, but, uh.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Joe Taylor, and I live at twenty-five Hummingbird Lane. I, I, I am familiar with the recycling lot, because I go and I've dumped stuff off there before. Great spot out there.
You may have a little sound.
Speaking of noise. Pollution here. As I go out and I walk my dog, because I'm retired now, and I'm there all day, and I hear the noise. Uh, the noise could use some soundproofing there. And I'm not sure what the new piece of equipment that is going in is supposed to do. Is it, is it, is it a car crusher? Bales metal. In that case, I would, uh, a- ask that if this is, is approved, that a wall can be put on the south and the east side of that to block the noise, shove all the noise north to Oak Street. That's a commercial spot, let it go there. There are people that live closer to them than I do, and I would not buy a home there if it was fifty bucks. Because if it's loud where I live, it's got to be horrible there. But if they can put in some things which will keep the noise down, that would be great. And other than that, uh, can you tell me why this was put in as a P U D instead of a
That would be a.
Commercial?
Everybody. I don't even understand, hopefully. Back when this happened, um, five years ago, uh, they first came with this request, um, their, their business model changed from car salvage to recycling, and you go by our zoning ordinance, and the only place you can actually put recycling or a scrapyard or that kind of business is I three industrial, which is our intensive industrial, which allows, you know, more noise, allows, um, dust, and, I mean, that's our intensive industrial where you can really have a kind of a belching factory for better, lack of better words, going. So with that in mind, we didn't think that anybody wanted to see an I three zone go there. That's not what they were talking about doing, but with that, if you put an I three zone there and they sell their business, someone can come in and put in a, a dog, um, food processing plant or something like that, you know, that would be probably really fragrant. So, um, that's why, basically, because there was no other zone that really fit, um, what they were trying to do other than that I three zone, so the P U D zone allows you to craft a a zone that you can actually put conditions on, so that you can help try to rein in. If, if it's going to be in allowed use, you can put those conditions on there to help, get it into some kind of controllable fashion. So that's why.
And that, and that, that, thanks right there. If, uh, some conditions can be put, uh, to control the noise on the south and the east side of the new piece of equipment, uh, that would be great. If we could get some type of growth. Me, I've allowed bamboo to grow along the back side. That does, I mean, helps block a lot of the noise. If you could encourage the bamboo to grow along the east side, that would be great, uh, to help with the noise. Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else to speak on this issue? All right, we'll call it back into commission.
I have a question for the Linds.
We probably all do.
Yeah, so, um, where is, where is the car crushing going on right now, uh, on your lot? Is it on the north side, south side? Where, where is that happening?
It's, uh, right, right in this area right here.
So that's, so that's where it's going on? It's in the same area we're talking about?
No, I said there. It's right, right in here. We, we have about one car a week coming in. That has a diesel engine. Hard that year.
Okay.
So it was ten days or so, there, that thing has been running baling metal.
Okay.
Shut that down and quit that because it was awful.
So it's not the car crushing that's causing the loud noise, it's the baling of the metal?
The baler we're wanting to get is electric, uh, and will be quieter, and we're moving it further away, and we'll be moving the metal that's back there up the biggest part of it, not all of it, but we will move that in there. We can work it better, quieter. You know, it just seems to me like it's all a plus the way it is. Now, on the the sound barrier, uh, on the south end of it, we built a, when, when we got this, we built a, about a six-foot berm and then put a four-foot wooden fence on top of it. And I don't know, you know, they're, they're talking like an eight-foot metal fence is what they'd want, like L K Q has, but I've, I've walked and I've been back there. We've had a few complaints. There's a scrapyard there next to us. They have been, you know, they I've, I've walked and I've been back there, we've had a few complaints, there's a scrapyard there next to us, they have been, you know, they bail cars on down there. Uh, they'll save up two-hundred-and-fifty at a time, that's what I heard, and then they go in and they bail for a few weeks and doing hauling, there's mechanic shops, there's but we don't make all the racket in that area.
It's the people south of you.
Yeah. That, that car baling is going on further down the street, right?
And we do some, we've done some, but we're not gonna have the supply of cars that, that we had when we had our U-Pullit yard and was pulling them out. And we used it, uh, for a few weeks, we've been using it to bail some metal because the foundries and stuff, they want it in a, in a bail. And you had to bail it three times to get it down to the size they wanted it, and that was wearing out our baler and all of that.
So, you're not actually gonna keep the old baler, you're gonna replace it and upgrade it with a newer one? So, you'll have just the
We're gonna keep it for a few cars, but it, it won't be running much.
This new one that's improved with the, with a little bit quieter effect will be the main one, is what you're saying?
Quieter, the, it won't have the exhaust noise that that one had. Now, we did turn the exhaust away from them and done all we could there. And, you know, it will be moved, but I haven't, we haven't figured out just where we're gonna put it. It won't be any closer to them, it'll probably be further away from them. But it, it won't be used near as much.
The one that's next to you, or next down, right from y'all, how far away is that approximately? The one that does a lot more?
They
It's just the south, just to the south?
It goes, goes down almost all the way down to, what is that street that it goes by?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I know what you're talking about.
So, she mentioned at the public, uh, public interest meeting that you had at your facility, that you had mentioned to them your willingness to discuss additional noise cancelling and noise hampering, uh, additions to the property. Can you speak to us about what you had in mind during that?
Of course, we're, we're struggling with stuff, you know, it, it's, it's been, but if it does produce anymore, or whatever causes a problem, you know, then look at it, we've got the berm back there that, that's higher than what the fence would be. And, you know, to me, and it's grown up and all, that's about as good a sound barrier if you're gonna get, and a fence might, a metal fence might do it, but I'd like to do this as far as our hours that we're working, that they wanted to make sure, we don't work those hours, we work eight to five. And, um, Saturday.
Do you still work on Saturdays though?
Um, just during the summer nights.
So, so I guess going back to, uh, Justin's question, i- if this is approved, are you, are you willing to accept a condition to add a sound barrier up front? Or are you wanting to wait to test it out to see if it increases?
We can, you know, to build that fence and to put it in, to do it is like twenty thousand dollars. If it's not gonna do anything, you know, they, some of the neighbors have complained from the, the L K Q that has that fence all around it, how they can hear it. I don't wanna throw it out there, you know, but if, you know, if it, if we can prove that it will help some way and, and we're create, should create more, but we should be creating less noise.
And you're already moving it away from, you said you're moving it away from the area?
Been moving, uh, where most of the work is going on back in there in the back.
Yeah.
We'll be moving it off, open up and off to the side.
Farther away, okay.
Yeah.
About approximately how far would you say?
I'm gonna guess three hundred foot. Two hundred, somewhere between two and three.
I mean, I think, I think I'm with him, it, it doesn't matter really, if you had a brick fence, a rock fence, it don't matter what kind of fence you put out there, it's not gonna stop that kind of sound pollution, you're gonna need some sort of density from green space or, I mean, the bamboo idea wasn't, was as strong as anything we've heard tonight, I mean, you're gonna need some sort of vegetation density, if you have any chance of dampening uh, sound, right? 'Cause anything hard, anything, you know, that's not porous, it's just gonna, the sound's just gonna bounce off of it.
It doesn't have to be a fence, I mean, it would be his, his, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you had trees or some sort of vegetation where the sound could be absorbed in it, you, you might could, you might could sustain and dampen the sound. But if you put anything not porous out there, fence, wall, it's, the sound's just gonna bounce off of it. You may magnify, right? You may make it loud.
Brian, Brian, what's your take on this?
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm no, I'm no sound expert, but I mean, I know that I did hospital physics.
Well, I mean, our recommendation was to basically take the same, um, conditions that were placed on the original and place it on this new expanded area, which is a good starting point, but, you know, as always, you have a public hearing, we, we write the, I write this thing up kind of isolated without hav- having the public comments. So, now we're hearing about, um, some sound issues that I wasn't aware of when we were writing this up, so, um, I mean, I think that the conditions that were, that are on the existing should be placed on this area also at a minimum. Beyond those, there's really not a mention there, I don't believe, about sound, but that's a, like, like Jerry's pointing out, that's a tough one to try to create a regulation to, to regulate sound, sound is tough.
So, what is the Conway Code? 'Cause it's mentioned in here that it has to comply with the existing outdoor sound Conway Code, what?
Conway has a, um, noise ordinance which kicks in from seven at night to seven in the morning, basically, it calls for quiet hours and it's not real specific about what that means, but I mean, if it's causing something, it's causing somebody a problem and it's causing a nuisance and you call the cops and they, they come out to your house and they can stand there and hear it, then that's probably pretty much a nuisance, so. But, yeah, the sensitive hours are from seven on PM to seven AM.
This has been here for a while.
Yeah, I remember that from my youth.
So, in, in your opinion, do you think it's the people south of them that is really making more of the noise than what they are?
Uh, I mean, I think it's a conglomeration of everybody out there. L K Q is a much larger operation, so I wouldn't doubt that, I mean, I don't live there, so I hate to speculate, but, um, I wouldn't doubt based on their, the size of their operation that they contribute a lot to the noise out there, um, but that's just my speculation on it. Um, me and Jason Lyon did go out there today around two o'clock or so and drove around some of the neighborhood, stopped, turned off the motor and listened. Um, did hear some banging around, I mean, I'm guessing they'll run a crusher or baler or something over there. Um, from, from my standpoint, I mean, I could hear, again, I don't, I hate to speak for people who live there, 'cause I don't live there, but it was, it was noisy, I mean, I could hear it, but it whether it would disturb me all day long hearing that, I don't know, I mean, but I, I could hear it from, um, you know, Mockingbird and, and that, but but, and then, I can't say that it was them either, I mean, I, I, I just heard some noise and, and it was metal banging, but I don't know if it was going for L K Q or wherever. Uh, it wasn't like a, an airplane taking off or something that noisy, that horrendous, but it wasn't quiet either, so.
Sir? Yes?
I went out there today, walked around, walked in front of a gentleman's house. I wear hearing aids, I keep them on six, I turned them up to thirteen, and I got out and I started walking toward, back toward our place, and I heard some metal drop. And I heard some more drop. But it, but it didn't seem like it'd be at our place because it's like one piece dropped on concrete. I walked on up the street, I thought, well, I'm hearing my vehicle's run. Or the units up there, uh, crusher, I thought they had that running. But it turned out it was a high, it was loud, of course, my hearing aid was turned up, it was a loud air conditioner unit setting out the house when I got up there, and then I heard the metal drop behind me. And our place was still on up there, I could hear some stuff across the street. Uh, we don't make all the noise around there. That, that one metal place was a garage in there with a big tall fence, you could see the deal up. And I don't know what they were doing in there, I don't know, you know, I don't have any idea, but it was at a residence in front of his house. We don't make near all the noise out there, so I just wanted to throw that in.
Thank you, sir.
Sounds to me like that this new electric one's gonna be better than what he has now, but, uh,
He's moving the old one further away from him, too.
Right. Yeah.
And, and I think, I mean, how long has this been going on over there? I mean, it's so
We did this PUD in two thousand twelve.
Yeah.
But then again, we haven't really determined that all the noise that they're complaining about is his, so it could still, you know, exist regardless to him replacing equipment, so.
To me, to me, it's a noisy situation and, and the
But, you know, most of the, most of the businesses down through there are
All noisy.
There's a couple of car shops.
Yeah, we can't pin, to his point, we can't pin all the noise onto him, all we can ask is, is that he be a good, a good neighbor.
Sure.
And that he be as, as, as cognizant as he can to his situation. Right? And if, and if he's willing to be that and be cognizant of his, um, responsibilities to his neighbors, um, then that's all we can ask.
I mean, it's not like Simon Street has ever been a residential area, that's always been
Yep.
What it is. Houses have been there for a long time, I mean, I'm, you know what I'm saying?
I really think this new change is gonna be better instead of worse.
You can't say, man, you gotta wrap all your buildings in foam and, you know, I mean, that's physically, I mean, that's So, do we, do I have a motion?
Are we in committee?
Yes.
Yeah, this is committee.
I will make a motion to approve with the recommendations that were, um, set upon in two thousand twelve without adding any additional.
Oh, seconded.
All right, I have a motion to approve with the following conditions, it has been seconded by Brooks. Let me write that down. Um, hours of operation shall be from seven AM till six PM Monday through Friday and possibly seven AM to one PM on Saturdays. Ingress, egress, a curb cut shall be allowed on East Oak Street as presented, a drive across from Simon Street is also allowed. Outdoor su- sound system must comply with Conway Codes, metal buildings shall be allowed as part of the PUD. Green space, twenty percent of the PUD area shall be set aside as green space buffer as shown on the submitted site plan. Sinage, any new signage shall confirm with the current Conway sign regulations. Sidewalks, common space, and the property owners association shall not be required. An existing metal canopy can be used elsewhere on the site, driveway shall be allowed within a hundred feet of the property line. Sites be used for recycling of metal and non-farce materials and the necessary and related handling of these materials as defined in the PUD application. Landscaping shall be limited to twenty percent green space area only, no further is required. Parking lot ordinance shall not be enforced, gravel is permitted. Those are the conditions. Anything further? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. D five. Request a rezone from A one to RU fifteen fifty East Dayvor Drive. Do I have anyone to speak on, for that?
Good evening, Mark Redder with Holloway Engineering, two hundred Casey Drive in Mollum. The staff ride up was excellent on this and kind of covered everything that, uh, we thought it should, and, uh, I know there's some people wanting to speak, so I'll just step aside unless you have anything for me.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak in favor of this?
I'm Greg Smith, I live at twenty-eight Sutherland Road, uh, my wife Sharon is here, several of our neighbors in the area is here. We've had some discussion about it, we're not really necessarily opposed to the rezoning, it's just that we'd like to make sure you know our concerns and our wishes. If you are familiar with that area over there, it's a pretty large tract of land, fronts on Highway two eighty-six, and then behind it is, uh, Sutherland Road. And all of our properties lie on, what be the north side of Sutherland Road. And if you're familiar with it enough, there's, there's some elevation there, because it kind of goes up on that ridge that runs through there that, uh, the bus company and all is built on. So, we're really looking kind of down onto this property some respect. Some of our neighbors are really kind of up, up a little higher as well, so the idea that, that whatever is gonna be built there, whatever it turns out to be, someday, we're gonna be, it's gonna be visible to us. So, from that standpoint, we wanted to just make sure that, uh, that you made your recommendations in terms of, of what we think might help improve our property value, uh, in conjunction with whatever is being built there. In this case, I think it's gonna be, uh, the proposal later on for the, the change to, uh, storage buildings. Vegetative, uh, buffers on along Sutherland would be a very, uh, good thing to help, uh, kind of dampen out the, the view. There's already a pretty good tree screen along the fence line there now, that'd be one thing. Just the general aesthetics of what's going to happen with the property and what's gonna be built there. Combinations of aesthetics of the building, mixture of metal and brick or metal and masonry, uh, would be nice to see. A fencing, not just a hurricane fence of sorts, or something like you might see in a low-scale uh, unit, but something more like the wrought iron types that you see around Conway at some of the places they're seeing now. All that's gonna be seen, uh, by us on the backside of the property. The entrances, I'm assuming, would probably be designed off of two eighty-six rather than off of Sutherland, we'd, I don't think we want to increase our traffic load for the kids, the children, all that play along that street by having people enter, entering off of Sutherland Road necessarily. And then, uh, something that's near and dear to my heart, and I think to some of the others of us, we kind of live on a, on the hill, on the upside. And we're in an area that is zoned agricultural right now, but at some point, you know, we'd like to see maybe the capability of us bringing sewer up to our properties, that's probably what would help improve my property value as much as anything. I don't know that building a unit, uh, a storage system, uh, with, that fronts off of two eighty-six is necessarily gonna help get sewer development brought closer to Sutherland Road. So, if that's not gonna be the case, maybe some pre-planning for the allowance of some easements, uh, pre-established easements through the property, so it wouldn't just cause, you know, future development of sewer bring, coming off of two eighty-six up into Sutherland, uh, to just be totally cost prohibitive by going through a uh, developed property with storage buildings and asphalt or concrete driveways and those sorts of things. So, you know, for me personally, I'm here to say I'm not against it, like, it could be a lot of things worse that we would not wanna see. But the way that I'm seeing these metal or the, the, the storage units being built around now, uh, the, some of them are really pretty attractive. So, I don't think that would necessarily hurt us, but if you could take some of these considerations of, of what we're gonna be viewing and seeing into your recommendation to the city council, we'd certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Fred Langford and I'm at fifteen hundred East Dayvor Drive, and I haven't actually seen the proposal on what we're talking about. I know this particular property is ten acres, and I know that we're probably not gonna put ten acres of storage back there, I don't know. But, my property is right next door, and we have those two office buildings.
Yeah, they're nice.
That are what I deem as Class A facilities. And we worked with Brian, and Brian made sure that I made those facilities look excellent. And what I'm saying is, in a storage facility, and I've been in business with a stor-, I've been in storage business before. I have built facilities in, uh, Dallas and in Austin, and I've owned them. And I don't have any problem with them. The thing that I would ask is that, since it's right next door to us, I would want the west side of that particular facility to be masonry, brick, split-faced rock, something like that. Not to see metal, because our facility is two stories tall, if you look at it, and on the east side, which would be right next door to there which would be right next door to theirs, we were required to go two stories all brick. And then on the west side, we're halfway brick. And then, of course, on the front, we're brick. And on the landscaping, we went over and beyond what the city would require because we wanted it to look that way. And we're proud of that. And so I think a storage is fine. But I really would ask that those particular requirements be put in place. Not a fence between us. Wood fences, s- chain-linked fences detract. And in a couple of years, they're gonna be a problem. And so it would be better if they built a facility with having the storage be the perimeter wall itself with masonry and landscaping that looked very nice. And so that's what I would like. And I know I'm not paying the bill, but I have paid the bills and I know that we built those buildings. So it would be nice to have something that sorta just kinda blended in to the facilities that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Leslie. I live at six Sutherland Road. I'm directly across the street from this, uh, proposed, um, business. The, um, it concerns me that, um, I don't know what's happened to the previous plan. I went to a meeting at the Christian School a year or two ago where they talked about a large roundabout being built at the intersection of East German Row, East German Lane and, um, two eighty-six are East Dave Ward. Um, that was phase two of a plan. The phase, uh, phase one of it or phase A of it was Lewis Crossing, um, shopping center. And, um, the plans that were there for that operation to, to, um, build that to roundabout and to improve all of that area and to, um, uh, widen the road and would help the traffic flow from Lewis Crossing, um, I thought was a good plan. This plan, I think, and there was a, uh, in that plan was a proposal for a street that would come from, uh, two eighty-six straight across near the, um, that's a pie-shaped, Sutherland comes in at a pie-shaped angle. And this, this street would have been directly across from my driveway, um, which I thought was all right. But I noticed that in this plan, uh, that's done away with. They won't be there. And, um, I would simply echo what I, uh, I would have to say I oppose this plan because I do think it will detract from the value of my property. Um, uh, and if, uh, if you're, if you're going to, if you're going to do it, I would echo what these other people have said here tonight. Aesthetically, you know, quiet, from a quiet standpoint, it's not bad. There was a church proposed before. That was good. It didn't, that didn't, never materialized. Uh, and, but from a quiet standpoint, it, I don't have any problem. But, uh, from an aesthetic value standpoint, I think it's terrible unless you do the things, unless you require the things that these people here have talked about tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else speak? Either for or against this? Seeing none, I'll call it back into commission. Um, committee, let me, uh, commission, let me remind you that this is, uh, to rezon from A one to R U. Um, having said that, um, if you'll read the staff comments, that this basically allows office use by right. Um, and so I'm not certain that we have the, uh, this is not a P, not to move to a P U D. So I'm not certain that we have.
That is the next item viability there.
D six.
Right.
Yep. So this is just to rezon it?
Yes.
To R U one?
I agree with the rezoning to R U one. I think it's a, a natural progression as the staff comments note. It's a, it's a, it's a good place to start the, the winding down of the commercial development that's happening from Lewis Crossing sorta around that area and transitioning into the residential once you sorta get past that intersection right there. Uh, I think it's a good place to start tapering down. Uh, so from a, from a zoning perspective, I agree with R U one. And I will make the motion to approve.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't have any problem with rezoning. I, I, I think I have some more conversation when it comes to the conditional use.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Has been seconded by Ms. Ann to, uh, rezon this from A one to R U one. Um, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So, since we've already heard most of this discussion, the next item is to request for conditional use permit to allow mini storage in R U one. So, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
I would love for you to come up and talk about y- your plans. Do you have any design?
Well, it, the developers, Dr. Thomas, who obviously did the building behind the hospital, the physician building with five oh one cafe, he isn't as interested in developing his property to be junk. So this will be the type of modern mini storage that we're, that we're kinda talking about here that'll have brick ends and those kinda things and fancy columns. And of course, it'll conform to the landscape regulations of the city, which are pretty, pretty stringent. Um, and so I don't, uh, see that it would be anything that detracts from the neighborhood.
Is it climate control?
You know, I, I don't know that. Um, we're, you know, we're not that far along in the design yet. But, but that's pretty common with these two to have at least one climate.
Really upscale ones it is.
Yes, yes. But, um, I'm sure he'll make every effort to make it as attractive as possible.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else to, uh, have any further comments on the conditional use? All right. I'll call this into commission.
So last time we approved one of these on German Lane, they had plans and exactly what it was gonna be and we were able to go, okay, we love these plans, but we wanna see bigger trees than what you're calling for here, here, and here.
Double-faced fencing.
And I have no problem with there being storage units here. I, I think it's a great spot for it.
Yep.
I wanna see something before I approve it.
Yep, I agree.
Agreed.
So in that regard, unless somebody else has something to say, I'm making motion to approve, but I, I just can't vote for it.
Let me, let me ask you this. If we vote this down, how long is it before they can re- request?
Should we table it?
Well, you got a couple of choices, I guess. One, you can table it and hold it in committee until next month possibly. Um, and that would give them a little time hopefully to get some plans together and then they could come back and you could, before you kinda sink it. Or, um, if you do vote, um, denial or it doesn't get approved, then, um.
Have to wait a year?
Have to wait a year unless they get a two-thirds majority vote from y'all also tonight. Did you say you could bring it back in less than a year's time? So, um, if two-thirds of y'all vote to say, we're killing it, but you can bring it back in less than a year's time, then they could bring it back in less than a year's time. Otherwise, you could hold it in committee for a month and.
Well, does that give, does that give enough time though? Since there's noth- since you haven't seen anything today, is there something in the works where you could have it ready for next month?
Oh, we could absolutely have it.
So it could happen? Okay.
Because.
I don't think it would have to be, you know, construction-worthy. Drawing is just something that gives you all the, what you need to know.
But to get it on the agenda, you're gonna have to have it sooner than that.
Oh, yeah.
How about we make a?
I'm making motion to table it.
To table it?
And if, and if Brian says, hey, we need to table it another month at the next month's meeting.
The bylaw says you can table it for up to two mon- I mean, two months, no more than two meetings, so.
Do you want two months or one month?
That's what I was just gonna suggest, that probably two months instead of one would probably.
So July meeting, you could bring it back.
So do we need to just deny the request, but two-thirds of us?
No, no.
No, I would say, yeah. I would say to table it and, and say to return on the July. I'll have to look at my date meeting.
Motion to table until July.
Second. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
All righty.
I got all excited and thought I was still. Have it, it's just have it.
And that'll be July the sixteenth, so everybody knows that, that we're talking about coming back with it on July the sixteenth.
She wants my job.
Do we need to vote?
We had a vote. So there's a motion on the floor to table this. There's a motion on the floor to table this to the July meeting. Has been seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Seconded. Motion on the floor to adjourn. Has been seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Yes, you too. Uh, first, Jason, I think Jason. Justin made the motion.
No, I made the motion.
You made the motion, Justin seconded. Sorry.
The, Ann was the original.
Oh, to table. That was Brian.
Brian was.
Valencia, Valencia seconded.
The, the motion to table.
Okay, yeah, Valencia seconded. Yay, let's go home. Hey, Beth, we missed you.
Yeah, yeah, I do some of Stams. Like, I do John Daly's and Stams.